Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Killdoble Hills Board of Commissioners. Excited to see some happy faces in the audience, including our Vice Chairman of the County Commission, Wally Overman. Good to see you. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as is our custom, if you would, join me for a short moment of silence. Thank you so much. Folks, we have an agenda before you.
Mayor, I would move we approve the agenda as presented.
Excellent idea. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have an agenda. First item on our agenda, of course, is public comment. For anybody not familiar, we do this twice every meeting, at the beginning and the end. You can speak on any topic you like. Keep it to three minutes, five minutes for a group. I don't think we have anyone signed up, but anyone's welcome to run right up there right now if you like. Going once?
No one signed up, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. Going twice? All right, we will close the public comment for now, but you do have a second chance at the end of the meeting, so remember that. First up, introductions and presentations, The Wall That Heals Traveling Exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for allowing us here today to introduce you to The Wall That Heals. As you will see, this is an exceptional presentation of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC, that will be shown at the Soundside Event Site in November of this year. We wanted to introduce this to you today and wanted you to be familiar with it if you weren't already. Hopefully, upon seeing this presentation tonight, Killdoble Hills will choose to support this event wholeheartedly. The Wall That Heals is being brought here through the efforts of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council. And I'll show you this. There it is. And as it says here, the Dare County Board of Commissioners created the Veterans Advisory Council in respectful recognition of the service and sacrifice of all Dare County veterans as represented in all the branches of the United States Military Service. The Veterans Advisory Council helps Dare County veterans by serving as a liaison with the community in coordinating services and activities benefiting veterans and their families. We have two members of the Advisory Council here with us today, Mr. Rick Probst and Mr. Tony Imperioli. Thank you, guys, for the work you do. Really appreciate it. We're going to show you a short video that shows how the event works, and after the video, Ms. Patty O'Sullivan, who is our Veterans Services Officer, will talk about the event in a little more detail, and then we will answer any questions you may have. Again, thank you for your time and your interest.
The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund many years ago created a replica of the wall that travels to communities around the country that we call The Wall That Heals. This mobile replica...
...really is about taking the names home to communities, large and small, to allow people to have that same kind of healing experience, to come and show their respect, to remember those 58,000 whose names are on the wall, as well as the 2.7 million Vietnam veterans who served who returned home. It's a chance to look back and pay their respects to those who answered the call of service to their country, especially those who made the ultimate sacrifice.
To be able to take this around to communities that may not even know anything about the wall or the war, especially for the young kids, to come out and see these things and get educated on it. People need to know what these 58,000-plus gave their lives for, whether they want to hear about it or not, they need to know.
The experience at The Wall That Heals is, as you go from one end in toward the center, the wall actually rises up above you so that it is taller than you are, which is one of the key design aspects of the wall in Washington. As you go down one of the walkways, the wall actually rises above you. And I think that has a psychological impact where you actually understand that there is something important here. It is so large that it creates an emotion of power, and you understand you're supposed to stop, you're supposed to think about it. And in this case, you can read the names, you can see your reflection in the wall, and you have to remember why those names are inscribed. These are people who sacrificed their lives for our country.
I get this feeling in my stomach, the pride that you see. When we went into San Dimas, the kids were all along the streets with their American flags. That always chokes me up because I know what it is to serve this country, and we as Americans sometimes don't understand the cost of war. Hate the war all you want, but don't hate the warrior.
I met a couple of guys here this morning, and one guy, I walked up to him and he started crying already. Man, it makes me feel good, not that he's crying, but that he's here to have bonding with someone and be able to find his buddy on the wall. It means so much.
We can go to the next slide if, uh... Yeah, there you go. I don't know what that is. That's not supposed to be part of it. Uh, must be playing off of ours, maybe? I don't know. Oh, it must be the next video off the website. There we go. Okay. Good evening, I'm Patty O'Sullivan, Dare County's Veterans Service Officer. I'm here on behalf of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council to let you know that out of over 100 applications, Dare County was one of 32 counties to be selected to host The Wall That Heals in November 2023. The tour extends from California and goes across the country and ends in Dare County. We feel it's important to bring The Wall That Heals to Dare County since our county, as well as the surrounding counties, are home to several thousand veterans, including those that served in Vietnam. Many of these veterans are disabled due to their exposure to Agent Orange, to Agent Orange, and may never be able to travel to Washington DC to see the actual wall. Just like the Vietnam Veteran Memorial in Washington DC, there are more than 58,000 names on The Wall That Heals. The tractor trailer that carries The Wall That Heals, and once it's unloaded, turns into their education center. It features a timeline and artifacts from the Vietnam War. One of the features it offers is the Wall of Heroes, which are local veterans who died during the war, as well, as the war, oh, sorry, during the war, as well as in the In-Memory section, which highlights local veterans who served in Vietnam and passed away after they returned. No matter what the cause, the wall is inclusive to honor all Vietnam veterans. There's also an information education tent that will allow visitors to be able to find names of family members or friends who they may have lost, and shows them how to create a rubbing of their, of the name of the relative or friend. The dates of the wall are, they're, it arrives, it comes in on the 14th of November via an escort, then it is erected on the 15th, and the official opening is the 16th of November, and then it goes until Sunday, the 19th. And once it's set up, it's open 24 hours a day. We will need several volunteers to help set up and take down the wall, as well as staff the wall while it is here. If anyone is interested, please feel free to email me, and I will forward the signup links to anyone. I have business cards I can leave if you'd like. The VVM will also offer tours to groups interested in taking part in a tour such as schools, community groups, companies, et cetera. We're doing these presentations in hopes to support, to get support from the local towns to make this event happen. Most of the veterans I help are Vietnam veterans here in Dare County, and they remember what it was like when they came home. I remember what it was like when my brother came home from Vietnam. We're hoping to honor these veterans and give them the respect they deserve. Thank you. Wally would also like to finish up our presentation here.
As Patty pointed out, we'll be presenting this same presentation to all of the towns and to the Dare County Board of Commissioners relatively soon. We have received several donations from private individuals to bring The Wall That Heals to Dare County, and the Dare County Board of Commissioners voted to contribute as well, which we're very thankful for. In addition, we presented this to the Nagshead Commissioners recently, and they have voted to help us with event site permitting and preparation, and we're quite thankful for that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your offer to help with the drone video coverage of the arrival of The Wall That Heals. We hope to be able to use this as part of an extensive video of this event, including the opening ceremony, which we are planning right now. Also, a special thank you to Commissioner Terry Gray for his invaluable guidance in arranging the motorcycle and Jeep escort of The Wall That Heals from Plymouth to the Nagshead Event Site. Terry has worked with the mayors and police chiefs of Plymouth, Manio, and Nagshead to make the arrival of The Wall That Heals very special. At this point, I believe we will have well over 100 motorcycles and up to 50 Jeeps for the escort. As Patty pointed out, this, The Wall That Heals is starting out in California this year and making its way all the way across the country, and I think it's 30-some stops before it gets to us. But we are the last stop of the year, and we really want to make it, send it out with a bang. We're really trying to get all the ceremonies and everything together, put together for that so that it'll be good. With regard to donations, it is important to note that all donations will help to not only bring The Wall That Heals to Dare County, but will also support Dare County veterans through the Veterans Advisory Council. And if anyone has any questions, we'll try to answer, mostly Patty will try to answer. If you have some questions, we'd be happy to take a shot at answering.
Well, that's an incredible thing. How long has this been going on? Is it relatively new or been around for a few years?
Oh, no, it's been around, the, yeah, the actual wall?
Well, I know the actual wall is from the 80s, I guess, right?
Yeah, no, this, uh...
The traveling one?
The traveling wall, you mean, their traveling wall?
Yeah.
There's actually five of them, but the one that we're getting, it's, it's been around for several years.
Okay. Yeah, it's great. I just want to, you know, people can ask questions, I don't know what the answers are. Yeah, that's fantastic. My, you know, I'm sure we all have a veteran in the family, I would imagine. My father was Army, his father was Air Force, et cetera, et cetera. So, be sharing it and helping get the word out, I know, in our own ways, social media and otherwise, so anything we can do, yeah, let us know what we can do to help. Any, any questions? Thanks for reaching out to me, Terry, about the drone. You know, I love any excuse to fly.
For agreeing to do that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll, uh, call a few other drone friends of mine. I think we should get it from a few different places, and we'll try to put it all together. Yeah, it'll be fun. Great, great thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks as any. Appreciate it. Should be really incredible. Open 24 hours, that's really great, too.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it's, it's very solid.
I imagine.
The whole process is very solid.
I have these cards if you'd like me to leave them.
Yes, please, yes, please.
I've been impressed with everything I've seen with it. It's very, very impressive. And it really brings people, you know, to their heartstrings as far as touching somebody they know or something like that. I, I'd like to, I've talked with the Assistant Town Manager and, you know, at length about funds available and so on and so forth. I, I'd like to give the Town Manager opportunity to look at what kind of funds we have available and our event funds and possibilities, and bring something back to the board that we could do, not exceed $5,000 to make as a donation. Unless you're already ready to go.
Yes, sir. Charlene had discussed your conversation with us, and, um, there are, there would be funds available in the events line that would not hinder any other event that had been planned.
I'd be willing to make a motion for the Board to consider making that donation for $5,000. Just the inner faith, I believe, is the, who would, we would give that to, correct?
I, I don't know that all of that has been worked through. I know Charlene was talking with, with the director there.
Yeah.
But that would, it would not, it would, it would not work in conjunction with our partnership. This would be something in addition.
Right, be additional, yeah.
But we, we can work out, we can work out exactly who it would go to.
I'd be glad to make a motion, Mayor, that we, we do that and let staff work out in particulars on how to donate the money to the wall and support it. So, you know, we've got a huge amount of veterans in the area, and then on, it's kind of a flip coin, you know, of course, it would bring a lot of people to the area as well, so it would help a lot of businesses, you know, in the off-season, so kind of a double-edged effect.
That's a good bonus, too.
Yeah, so that's a form of a motion.
All right, we have a, a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
And a second. Any further discussion? I would say, yeah, no, no objection from me. Worthy cause, and I think that they'll put the funds to good use now or later. That organization's very good stewards of the, of the money veterans group there. Any other thoughts? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you for taking care of the details.
Thank you, Debbie.
All right. Any ongoing business? Or we jump right to new business?
Um, no ongoing business, Mayor.
Our first item of new business is appointments. Nope, I'm sorry, did I get the wrong piece of paper there?
Site plan.
Oh, we got the site plan first, I'm sorry. I just saw this piece of paper, it says new business right there. Looking down. So, yeah, we will take a look at the site plan for 2,000 North Croatan Highway, a car wash.
I think that's you.
In your packet is a proposed site plan at 200, uh, 2,000 North Croatan Highway, the commercial zone to construct a 2,015 square foot drive-through car wash with 20 parking spaces, spaces and associated site modifications. It is a permitted use in our commercial zone, and in your packet you had the site plan, and on January 27th, the Planning Board will review the proposal and forward it to the Board Commissioners with a favorable recommendation, and I will answer any questions that you might have about it.
Good-looking building.
Very good site plan. I was, I liked it. I thought it looked very good. I think they all did a great job, Meredith working with it, and I didn't have any questions.
Pretty straightforward, I thought, too. Go from two...
No car washes.
One to, one to three, right? Yeah, you've got one other one, right? The other one's a kitty huck.
It's gotta be a thing, because when you drive around, other towns have a ton, too.
Yeah, we ought to be very clean. No more rusty cars for us. I've learned the hard way about the rust in cars, going to hatters all the time. It's, it'll get you. So, yeah, new sway bars this year. So, yeah, I guess we don't have any questions, and, and as Meredith mentioned, the favorable recommendation from the Planning Board on the 17th in January.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the site plan submitted for new business item number one, 2,000 North Croatan Highway in the commercial zone, proposed car wash as presented.
Excellent. We have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second for Mr. Windley. Any further discussion about the car wash? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it. Support on the water side.
Great.
Looked good.
Good-looking building, definitely.
It has a little beachy look to it, yeah, like that. There you go. Looks great. Super.
I'm excited about it, too. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got all the paperwork for you.
You're welcome. Thank y'all so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do you have a start date for shovels in the ground?
What's that?
Did you tell the time that you were gonna, you know, when you get started on it?
Soon as y'all get.
Right away, huh? Some people wait a long time. Ready to go.
I would guess 90 days to get permits and stuff like that, yeah, probably. We would love to begin spring, get that initial construction over the summer, you know, not during the winter, and open it up probably the end of the year, first of next year.
Good deal.
Perfect. Nice. Best of luck, project.
There you go.
Thank you.
Meredith, just a quick question on this, and I don't, maybe before they leave, real quick, that, has DOT, I mean, I know DOT will do some traffic, that is, Durham's gonna, that's gonna be rough. I'm curious. Well, just, no, not necessarily, but that area, just with Target, wah-wah, like Durham, you know, Fifth Street's all right because it's got the light, but Durham, oof, looking at those site plans is very, very concerning. I think we're gonna have a issue, kind of like what, where you had your accident almost, where people are turning and then trying to turn right to go into the car wash. Anyway, just think...
I believe previous boards have actually talked to DOT about making that a, a limited left turn, like Kitty Hawk.
I was wondering about that, yeah, like, like how Kitty Hawk has this sort of medium...
I don't know that, I don't know that that went anywhere, but...
Maybe, maybe you could add that to your...
Maybe that's something we could, uh, check with DOT.
Yeah.
Talk with our buddy about.
I was thinking it might be good to be proactive about, because it's, they're all, seem like they're all gonna come within four months or so, and it's gonna be, go from nothing to everything.
Definitely gonna be a hub, yeah, it's gonna be a lot of action. We'll, we'll talk with that.
Just thought I'd throw it out there now, so we can start thinking about it.
Want all open at the same time, at least, but...
But within a very short amount of time, yeah.
Everything's gonna change, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
For many years, I lived on a street with no light, and that, there's a certain point where you just go, I've gotta find a light. Get to a light. It's just safer way to giving it out. All right, so that was item number one. Item two is appointments.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I saw that piece of paper, the two is right at the time. Drew me off there. Looked at the wrong paper. There, there have been some discussions about applicants. Anybody want to jump in?
Sure, Mayor, I'll jump in on that. I did get the email about Mr. Fletcher's application for the Historic Landmarks Commission. I was impressed with the application, and I feel like he would be an excellent addition to that board, and I'm willing to make a motion to appoint Mr. Fletcher to the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I know him personally.
You do?
He actually worked, he used to work in my law firm, yeah, he's a, he's an incredible real estate attorney, also historian, so, uh, and a really well-liked lawyer. He's retired as a lawyer, uh, but he's, uh...
Felt like a good match.
He is a really good guy, and he's excited about it, so, yeah.
Good, good, super. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Congratulations, Mr. Fletcher. Thank you for serving. If you're watching from TV land up there.
He might be.
There's not a lot of people watch this live, I'm like, really? Exciting Monday night.
Hi, Colleen.
Super Bowl.
Not the Super Bowl, but we try, follow up. The next one is Community Apairments Commission, and...
Mayor, I'll jump in on that one, too.
You're just all tech today.
Are you the halftime show? We're not cooperating with you today. Thanks for singing at me.
What is happening?
Camera needs to not go on vacation because I clearly can't.
I need my camera.
He, well, he's actually at training today. Last one, he was on vacation, this one, he's in training, so he can't.
We only, we only have one application on file at the moment for the CAC, and that candidate, at the time with Miss Hester, when she originally put her application in, there was a bit of a conflict schedule with her work schedule and the meeting schedule that has yet to be resolved. The CAC meets quarterly now, so the urgency for meetings is not quite as hectic as it was in the past. I'd like to maybe give it a couple of months, because our next meeting will coincide real closely with trash attack, and if we see, that's really the signature event that the CAC is affiliated with, I'd like to maybe table it for now, see if we get some more applications, we go into the spring, and then maybe, if it comes along, and we can figure something out.
Think if that's got consensus?
I second your motion to table it.
Do I need a motion for that? Just by consensus is easier? That's what I've always figured.
Worded they voted, yeah.
Right. No vote, no, no need for motion. Gotcha. All right, thanks, we can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, committee reports. I'll look left and look right. I know that CA, we've mentioned trash attacks coming up. Always good to plug the date.
What is the date of trash attack?
April 1st.
April 1st.
No, we had our planning meeting last week for a trash attack. Sandy Mark is phenomenal job, is almost in cruise control under her leadership.
Nice.
Everything's lining up, it's normal, and we should have a very successful event, so we're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
I ran into some people at a Super Bowl party who were asking how to volunteer. I said I would get them the information. I'm gonna jump out there and help. I'm looking forward to it, too, and looking forward to, always excited about posters made by kids, too.
Yes.
It's always good fun.
And in the consent agenda, there's a, uh, item for the Government Education Access Channel for the budget approval. Each unit has to, participate unit has to approve that, so that's included in the consent agenda. Thank you, Michael.
All right, good to know, good to know. Any other committee meetings that I hadn't heard about? All right. Moving on, Commissioner's Agenda. Oh, I just want to extend a brief thank you to staff. I was sent a resident concerning email about a high-profile, very visible derelict vehicle that is no longer in that space. I'm not gonna share more details, not to embarrass anybody, but staff's happy, and I'm sure other people are, that that was addressed and done the right way. It really was everyone's benefit that, that get taken care of, so, thank you all.
Yes, sir.
Super. Have you anything?
I just want to bring something up real quick after looking at the plans, which really didn't have anything to do with the car wash, but I did notice, again, the six-foot wood fence, and... And just going back to Wawa, I know we had talked about potentially changing that to making, which it might not even apply to this because I realize it's not gonna be the, you know, sort of late-night business that Wawa is, but is that something that the planning board could maybe take a look at, changing?
Actually, I think.
Or are they already, or is it already in process?
We're, we're in the middle of updating the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And if that's something that, that the board would like to see, that would be, we're not doing a lot of regulatory changes with this update.
Okay.
Um, but we're doing a few.
Okay.
And.
That's when we need to look at options.
I know, I would like to.
Yeah, we do.
You know, as future development comes along, I think it would.
At that meeting, yeah.
Definitely. Prevents some issues in the future, then I think it's worth taking a look at.
And you're talking about bigger fences for like incompatible uses or twenty-four hour?
Yeah, serve a noise, you know.
Anywhere, residential, commercial, meets.
Yeah.
Certainly, I think it's twenty-four hours.
Right. Something just more than six feet wood fence.
Flexibility is good, too, because I think that, that some businesses, you wouldn't want a barrier.
Right, right.
Like, I don't know, I don't know what that would be, but.
And, and this isn't commercial, I mean, this isn't residential, it's commercial, so we have a little bit more say. Um, so just throwing out there, I do remember with Wawa, I think it was Wawa, that the vinyl nature of the fence, for example, was an issue for you guys, so if you guys wanted us to dive into the building material type, we could, we could do that, is all I'm saying.
Move more towards like.
Something like wood or con, something more sturdy.
Yeah, like stucco and.
Concrete, you know, yeah.
And I think the neighbors had mentioned height, I don't know if that weighs into it or not.
Right.
I think that.
But maybe taking a look at what Lowe's did even as an example, because that seemed to have made everyone happy, so, right.
And looks nice.
Mm-hmm, yes, it does.
At least look at what those options are, yeah.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Super.
Thank you.
Moving right along?
Nothing for me.
Oh, I, I did want to make one comment. Thank Meredith for the, uh, we had a business in town that was, uh, not looking very good and, uh, I got some pictures that were sent to me this afternoon. Uh, you've done a great job with, uh, that Burger King spot, cleaned it up very nicely. Thank you so much.
Jordan Bly is your man. He's on, he's on Christmas cards with the cookout, at this point he calls him so much.
Good deal, makes you look a lot better.
And speaking of looking a lot better, it's, uh, Target, I just, I hadn't been by there in a while, they finally got that, some interesting looking wall there. I'm like, wow, that's, I did not see that coming, that's pretty cool, I didn't get that from the drawings. But, uh, yeah, it's looking good over there, and the red, suddenly realized. And the parking lot, it's gonna be beautiful.
And, yeah, I did tell him, Dana, he needs to do the PR up there at, uh.
First in the state, right? Yeah, that might be a bad idea, but, uh, you got me thinking about something about sort of community appearance and that sort of thing on my notes here where, um, I had a constituent, uh, you might remember what everybody got talking about Sugar Kingdom and all that sort of thing. And everyone's got opinions about aesthetics that we can't really get into. Um, and certainly Killah Hill has a long history of trying to mitigate things that, you know, whatever people don't like or whatever. But I know that we have rules on the books that I, forgive me for not having them all memorized, about, you know, you can't have a string of lights and then have a bunch of lights out, right? But it's gotta stay in, be properly maintained. And I didn't know if those lo, rules extended to signs and things like that. Do we have rules about signs with lights out and that sort of thing? Because that seemed to be something that is regulatable.
Yes.
Yeah. Just a thought.
And there is an active violation at that site that has been active for quite some time, that they're accruing fines and we're in very constant contact with them about when they're gonna remedy their violations.
Okay, good to know, good to know. These are things people ask about.
No, they're paying the fines. No, not paying the fines either. They're just accruing.
We, we can't get them to pay the fines until they've complied, but they've been at five hundred dollars a day for quite some time.
Yeah, that's up. That's a jinx, yeah.
We don't get it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not a windfall to the town. It goes to the school board.
The Board of Education.
Oh, Board of Education, yeah. Fines and forfeitures.
We get it in a way, I guess.
Uh, the second thing I was gonna mention in Mayor's comments was I, I took the time of the weekend to do a little tour of all our beach accesses and was pleased to see that some work has been getting done, so I wanted to give kudos to whoever's been out there with a shovel and working on things. It's, uh, plenty of room to go, but nice to see some, you know, parking bumpers getting dug out and plants getting trimmed and, uh, I appreciate that because that's kind of our, that's what people come here for and, you know, we can always look better out there. So I appreciate that and, um, that's all I've got, I think. So let's see, next item is Town Manager's Agenda.
Yes, sir, we've discussed briefly when the board was setting your calendar for this year for your Commissioners' meetings, that some of our meetings that are so close together, we may be in a position to recommend or suggest that you, um, consider canceling them. And that's the case with our February the twenty-second meeting. Um, if there's no objections from the board, then I would request a motion from the board to, um, to not have that meeting that night.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was easy.
Thank you all. Thank you, you just got me off the hook, because I was gonna be at the CRAC meeting there.
Heard Doug good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was like, yeah, it was one, one week away, right? Nine days. Alrighty, so the next item is the Town, oh, already got, Town Attorney's Agenda.
I've got nothing, Mayor, Mr., thank you.
We always like it when that's the case. And then, um, the Consent Agenda.
Yes, sir, um, three items on the consent agenda, the minutes from the twenty-fifth of January, twenty-twenty-three, the December twenty-twenty-two monthly report, and a budget amendment, um, to appropriate North Carolina Lake of Municipality Wellness Grant Funds. And a motion would be in order, I'm sorry, excuse me, there's only three items on the first page. I could feel, I could feel Michael's eyes.
Head whipped around.
Number four, um, is Proclamations and Resolutions. First is a resolution, a reimbursement resolution for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, declaring the intentions to reimburse the cost of certain expenditures. This is basically saying that the money we borrow, we're gonna pay back. Number, uh, item D, excuse me, um, is a corrective resolution relating to Killah Hill's Town Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-one, Boards and Commissions. This is just some language, um, that needed to, um, be re-added to the code and approval of the consent agenda will approve the corrective resolution relating to this ordinance. Number five, as Commissioner Gray alluded to, is the Government Education Access Channel Committee's twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, um, which is approved by all of the, um, participating parties. And approval of the consent agenda, again, will record the board's approval for this budget. And lastly, the adoption of the updated North Carolina Division of Archives and Record Retention Schedules. Um, a number of years ago, the Board of Commissioners at that time adopted the, um, Record Retention Schedule for purposes of maintaining the town's records. Um, the proposed records retention and disposition schedule were previously provided to the board electronically and a link has been placed on the town's, um, meeting page, the website for public inspection. And approval of the consent agenda will record the board's approval of the general and program record schedule. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda or any items there? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? We have passed, we can get another consent agenda. Thank you so much. That leads us to our second public comment. And we're all the public, aren't we?